Call this meeting in order. The Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, February 21st, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
City Attorney Maniclier.
Here.
Invocation tonight is by Councilman Daskey. Could everybody please stand for the invocation?
Please bow with me. Our Heavenly Father, I would like to first thank you tonight for giving us the opportunity and the privilege and the honor to live in the United States like we do, as well as the city of Rockledge. Not everyone is quite as fortunate as we are. I would also like to ask you to help us make the right decisions on this council tonight, make the right decisions for the residents, and keep the city as well or better as it has been in the past. Please watch after our first responders, after our military men and women. Send them all home safely. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please stay standing for the, remain standing, stay standing, remain standing for the pledge allegiance. We have our Scout Troop 321 will be leading us with the pledge tonight.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys. All right, the council adds before them the minutes of the meeting of February 7th, 2018. Who wants a pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 7th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, move down for presentations.
It's three-year accreditation, which it upholds to this day. And whereas formerly known as the Brevard County Community Achievement Center, the organization found its permanent location at 1845 Coxwell Street in Rockledge, where it remains today. And whereas, the year 2018 represents the 50th anniversary of the Brevard Achievement Center, and the occasion is deserving of special recognition and should be properly commemorated. Now, therefore, I, Thomas J. Price, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Rockledge, do hereby proclaim February 2018 as Brevard Achievement Center Month in the city of Rockledge in recognition of the city's, of the center's 50-year milestone. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Rockledge to be so affixed as 21st day of February 2018. And here's your nice proclamation. Congratulations.
First off, thank you very, very much to the city for taking the time to recognize 50 years of service to this community. I'm going to take a little bit of break, and I want to say, recognize Diane Payne, our board member, who's been with the organization for a very long, long time. As a board member, as a volunteer, pretty much helping us two or three days a week, just as much, just like a staff person. And that is an example of a dedicated person to this organization, and she must love it, for a good reason. So, I'll start by telling a little story about, last week I was in Tallahassee to go advocate for the people that we serve. And when I was there, it just happened to be Disability Day, as well as Space Day. And so, as you can imagine, there's a person in a space suit, and there happened to also be a young man who was blind, who had a visual impairment. And he had a little sticker, a little "I love space" sticker, and his little cane to kind of feel his way around. And he wanted to see the spaceman. He wanted to go see the spaceman. So he walked up, and he started to feel the space suit. It was a powerful moment. You could see what was going through his head. He could feel the inspiration of the idea of going to space, and feel the idea and the dreams of potentially being a part of this community, Brevard County, and what we are doing in Brevard County. That's what we do every day. That's what we do at Brevard Achievements every single day. We're helping people realize that they can dream, realize that they can be a part of the community in a significant way, work in this community. And examples of that, I mean, we have people like Desiree with a significant disability who's supporting our Air Force Base and Kennedy Space Center as an employee of Brevard Achievement Center. And every day, when you ask her, she says she's a part of the space program. We're launching rockets. And she's working as a person with a disability for Brevard Achievement Center. We have people like Patrick, who's learning to become as independent as possible, much more significant disabilities, but comes to our facility here in Rockledge and has that opportunity to become as independent as possible. And finally, we have a person like Samantha, who's a student in the school system in Brevard County, and gets up on stage at the King Center, big stage, and dances her heart out in a performing arts opportunity, and has an opportunity to be on the big stage. That's the kind of stuff that Brevard Achievement Center does, and it does it through all of our amazing staff, the people that come here to our Rockledge Center. And we've been doing this with just that one idea of helping people year over year. So, thank you very much for 50 years. We continue to believe that we focus on people's unique abilities, and we look forward to the next 50 years. We look forward to grow with this community. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Patel, we appreciate what you guys have done in our community for 50 years, and of course, we expect 50 more years of what you do for our community, because it's very special to us. And this is just a little token of our appreciation, city pin.
Thank you.
So, every time we come down to Brevard Achievement Center, we give these pins. Appreciate you coming tonight. Now, we get to our special recognition of the Boy Scouts and the Scout leaders of Troop 321 for assistance, not only with our 2018 Rockledge Art and Craft Show, but I'm going to call up Pat O'Neill, our most popular and our Scout leader in Rockledge. Pat? We appreciate what you do. We appreciate what you do with the Scouts. We know that this is a big part of your life. And not only has the Scouts participated with art shows, they've participated with a lot of their Eagle Scout projects in the city. I don't know about any of these young men that are here. There probably are some of them here that have. But, you know, our exercise trail, our Jimmy Weaver Lake, there's been projects there, our Don Griffin Exercise Trail, the Londale House. They've had as many as five projects, from what I understand, at the Londale House. So, what you guys do, and what you do as a leader, Pat, and the other leaders out here of our Scouts, is you do a lot for our city, and we appreciate everything you guys do. And it is recognized, believe me. We do recognize what you guys do in the city, and you're a big part of our city. So I want to thank all of you, and we're going to call each individual up, and I'm going to recognize each individual, and I'm going to give them a city pin.
Eric Mellert. I have company. Ben Mellert. Jonathan Mellert. You're going to see a trend here in a second. CJ Mellert. Christian Gano. Don't go back, Christian. Hang on. Gabe Booth. Cody Masick. That's the ones from the craft show.
That's great. What you guys did was great. We appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you more at our craft shows and all of our other events. And how many Eagle Scout projects do we have here that have done stuff in our city? You're working on yours? That's good. What is your project? Hey, we need them. We need them. Can we recognize the other guys we have out here?
Please rise. I've got other adult leaders, I've got a bunch of new scouts. I'll be honest with you, I haven't learned all their names yet.
Okay.
We just did a transition, brought new scouts into the troop. As the older ones go on, we bring in fresh ones.
What about your two leaders first? Your scout leaders.
Give me a break. He just joined in.
Your name's?
My name's Chris Stone.
Chris?
This is James Kootsner. I've been with James for years. His son's an Eagle Scout.
Oh, great.
He was our youngest Eagle.
Now, were any of you guys Eagle Scouts?
Yes.
You were? You were too, James? Great.
No.
I know you were.
He's the first, this is my son Benjamin. He's the first in my family to make it.
Not the last.
That's right. Hopefully.
Not the last.
You want to bring them all up, or you just want to get pictures of these guys?
Come on, show them pictures. Everybody up. Come on.
Let's go stand out here, guys.
Up here. Yeah, in the light.
Scouts, right? That'll do this.
You know, get in as tight as you can.
We don't do that statement here. Shorter in the front.
No, I'm going to be good. I'll be good at all. Okay, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll read one, two, three. I'm going to take one more, please. I'm good. One paper. Got it.
Parents got any pictures?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
I just want to say, to take this moment, I think it's a very special moment to, again, congratulate these young men. Thank you for your hard work and working with our city. But I want to say a special thank you to the adults. Not only was I a Cub Scout, but I was a Boy Scout. And being a part of that group was, for me, was life-changing. It was very important. And I learned so much, and I grew so much. But I want to say a special thank you to Pat and all of the adults that work with these young people to cause lives to be different than what they could be. Can we give them a great round of applause? Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I'd also, I'm a former scout as well. I didn't make it to Eagle, but I plugged away at it for a long time. And, but I saw an interview on TV the other night with Secretary of State Tillerson, and the reporter asked him about, he had a reputation, I guess people called him a Boy Scout. And he goes, "Well, I was a Boy Scout." I think he said he was an Eagle. And he talked about what an impact being a scout had on his life that led him to become, eventually, the Secretary of State, Chairman of ExxonMobil. And I've talked to a number of Eagle Scouts, and you guys who are Eagle Scouts, and even you adults will know, it's not that you were an Eagle Scout. You are an Eagle Scout, and it's not that you were a Boy Scout, but you always will be. And learn from it. That's all.
Definitely. Thank you for words from both of you guys. That's great. Yes.
I acknowledge that I was a Boy Scout also, and here in Rockledge. So, congratulations on being, that's how to be a Boy Scout.
Amen.
Great. Anybody else was, well, I was not a Boy Scout.
We knew.
Harson, the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I too was a Boy Scout, but it was so long, just tonight, when I stood in the back, I was going to do the pledge, and I forgot a portion of it. But I would say this, it was a life experience for me, and with the camping and the community service projects that we did, and what I've seen Mr. Nea do with few young people, and in this community, it seemed to me that you will have a very, very bright future. Once again, congratulations on this achievement.
Absolutely. Great. All right, let's move on. Financial Budget Report, month of January 2018.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Daskey.
Move to be in receipt of the Financial Budget Report for the month of January 2018.
I second the motion. We have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. There is no public hearings, ordinances, or resolutions tonight. We're moving on to reports from boards and committees. Who's going to give me a report from boards and committees tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ferguson.
I move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Business Development Committee, minutes of meetings on January 30th, 2018. Planning Commission, minutes of the meeting on February 6th, 2018. Code Enforcement Board, minutes of the meetings on February 8th, 2018. And to consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Folks, it's going to be a short meeting tonight, so we don't have public hearings or nothing. So y'all just bear with us. We'll get through this. Okay, what's our first recommendation? Will be B, Planning Commission? Who's going to give that to me?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Make sure I have the right one here.
Recommendation one. Palm code signage.
Yep, yep. Move to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. We have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We don't have a picture of the sign up there, though. We didn't have it in our, I know you got it, Alex, but we didn't have one on this? Okay. Okay, let's move on to reappointments. Mr. Daskey?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Move to reappoint the following people to the Code Enforcement Board. David Wilkinson, Kevin Jarvis, Diane Johnson, all to the Code Enforcement Board.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any discussion?
Just want to thank them for the long service they've had.
That is right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business action item approval of services agreement Point and Pay LLC. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an agreement with a company called Point and Pay to enable the city to process credit card payments for city business. This is one of the components of our overall conversion with the enterprise solutions that we're doing this in the next six months.
Anybody have any questions, the City Manager?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I apologize for not asking you this earlier, Dr. Fettro. Is the fees they're charging, is that pretty normal? I mean, I don't know what he, I know there's a fee involved, but...
I believe, and Matthew, if you want to make your way up, I believe that's, what, 2.5%?
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent.
With a minimum.
It's pretty customary.
That's pretty typical.
I think it's pretty standard, but I'm not an expert in the field. But, yeah, it's not a fee to the city, but to the customer. Go ahead, Matthew.
Matthew Tryon, Finance Director, City of Rockledge. The fees that are charged seem to be pretty customary. The idea is, we went forward with this in order to make the best use of the software we currently are so graciously been allowed to purchase through action of the council. We have the ability to streamline some of our processes for the taxpayers and the people who do development within the city, to allow them to pay by credit card online, and even do some level of permitting online, which will mainly benefit the taxpayers for things that are small, such as fences and those kinds of items. So that being said, obviously, there's a cost of doing business when you're dealing with merchant fees and credit card company fees. And meeting internally with the executive team is led by Dr. Fettro. We explored whatever options are available to us. This company came as the best recommended from BSNA. They have over 500 joint installations between BSNA and this company. And the fee structure could be one of two different types, city-absorbed or user-absorbed. We felt, and Dr. Fettro will correct me if I'm wrong, but we felt that because a lot of the merchant transaction fees will likely be done by developers and people transacting within the city, that it should not be upon the taxpayer to pay those fees. It should be upon those who are transacting for their business to pay those fees. So these fees are to cover the merchant costs and the credit card company's fees. They will be billed directly to the person who elects to pay by credit card, will be collected by Point and Pay. It will not flow through the city's coffers, and it will not cost the city anything. So these costs are to cover those transactional fees. So the installation of the hardware and the transactional costs.
What do you mean? It won't cost, like, the city is not paying this two and a half percent fee?
Absolutely not. No.
User fee.
The fees will go to the customer.
Same thing it is when I go to Brevard County or City of Cocoa, I got to pay that two and a half percent.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman? The only question I had was that they can change the fees with only 30 days of prior
notice.
They can change their fees?
That's what it said in 2.1.
Well, you know, also, the user has the right to write a check, too, if he doesn't like paying the fee. So he can bring a check into the city.
And I will tell you, those are all pretty standard fees throughout the industry. I mean, so it's not like it's, they're going to come to us after we sign the contract and say, 30 days from now, we're going to change the fees to seven or eight percent. It just doesn't happen, because it's really set by MasterCard and Visa. They set the user fees, and then they're passed on to the user. So, it could change, and that's why they put that wording in there. It could change. I haven't really seen it change in probably, I'm going to, don't quote me on this, but about five years. I think it's been that long since it's actually changed.
It just struck me, and I had the question.
Yep, not a good question.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion to move forward with this? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Ferguson?
I move to approve the agreement and the addendum with Point and Pay LLC.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent business, Mr. Daskey.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Move to be in receipt of the following consent business items. First one, declaration of surplus property and approval to donate said property for the Department of Public Safety. Next, declaration of surplus property and subsequent disposal of said property for Planning Division. SCADA Video Surveillance Phase II Implementation, Design, and Construction Services for Tetra Tech for the Wastewater Treatment Department. Next is Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement, FDOT, for Public Works Department. Next is purchase of a 2018 Ford F-150 Super Crew 4x4 Police Package Truck. Item was approved on February 7th, 2018. Purchase price was revised. This is for the Department of Public Safety. And last is the use of forfeiture funds for $250 donation to the 2018 Rockledge High School Project Graduation Department of Public Safety.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business action item, approval of five agreements for debris removal and tree trimming. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you to Mr. Maniclier to get these contracts all done precisely and very, very similar. The city wanted to, they were on varying expiration dates and times and such, so we wanted to get them all on the same length of service and track, and to have that track not expire during hurricane season, because we wouldn't want to be without vendors during hurricane season. So there are five of them before you. I believe, it was brought to my attention that one may have a one-year term with up to three one-year renewals. So if approved tonight...
I think they all do.
Oh, they all do? Okay. Because the agenda item says two years. So anyway, so if council chooses to approve for them to be a two-year term with up to three one-year extensions, or one year, that's obviously for your consideration, but anyway.
Anybody have any questions over the City Manager or the City Attorney who gave you all this reading to have this weekend?
I have, I have one.
Go ahead.
I confess, I only read the document part of it one time, but I did read all the numbers. When we use these companies, are we going to, do we pick and choose what parts of the contract that we have them do? Because, for example, there's one that has, it says removal of a boat with a hull length of greater than 20 feet. There's one that's $600 to do that. And there's another one that's $14,000 to do the same thing. Well, $14,000, you can buy a bass boat.
Yeah. Actually, commend council. You all read every single word, because another councilman brought that example to my attention as well. So yes, I'm thinking that the, Ken is quite selective as to who he, which vendor he has, do what function, and...
And it's also availability.
And availability, particularly during hurricane season, but...
Availability is a big thing during a hurricane. How many people have already got obligations out there with other cities? And that's always been a big issue with us, availability.
Yeah.
We've never really had any problems in the past, but...
No.
Well, hopefully, you will.
Never know.
You know, a 20-foot boat's not that big. You know, if somebody wrecks their 21-foot boat, I mean, I'll go pick it up for $10,000 myself.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Yes. If I could, if you look at each one of these contracts, the contracts...
the contractors give us specific numbers for what they do, how much it's gonna cost, so on and so forth. We pick and choose. These are task order contracts. In other words, we have them setting out there. We need them to do the work. We give them a task order, they do the work. So it's not like every time they do anything, they're gonna get $16,000 for a boat because we'd never use them to pick up a boat because they'd have to beat you to the boat.
$10,000, I'll get it.
But that's, you know, that's the way they work. They're rather flexible. The reason why we have them is we have them in place when the services are required due to a disaster or hurricane, whatever it may be. We can go right to them, get them to do the work. That's why our streets and everything are a lot clearer than the county has ever even come close to, you know, being able to do. And then we can get our money back from FEMA a lot quicker because these contracts originally, when we first started doing this, 10, 12 years ago. And, well, that's when we first went with FEMA. I forgot what hurricane it was, but it was really a circus trying to get everything up off the streets. And we went to FEMA and asked them what kind of contracts would they need in place and the payment times. And although the people in FEMA have changed, they're pretty much steady on the way they want us to do things. And these contracts comply with the direction that they gave us.
That's what I was gonna say is that I know we've had a lot of success by using them with the documentation that they provide to help us get reimbursed from FEMA.
Yeah. That's the reason why. We don't have to go out and, you know, scramble around to get contracts.
And help us get paid for it.
Right. It's...
Works for me.
It's better to do this before the problem occurs.
Yeah, agree. All right. I just wanted to check that one point, too.
Any other questions, the city manager or the city attorney? Looking to move forward with this, folks. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman? I move to approve the five debris removal and tree trimming agreements.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we move on, petitions, remonstrances, and communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the city council?
Mayor, I have a card.
Go ahead.
Gail Stewart Isles.
Gail, come forward. Everything is recorded here, so you'll have to say your name and address for the record. And pull the mic down, Gail. Thank you.
I'm Gail Stewart Isles. I live at One Sweet Street here in Rockledge. And I have three things. One, because I do go along River Road, I was wondering about the status of the Valencia Dock. It looks rather sad, and I haven't seen it in anything. So I hope it's under consideration to bring it back to its former lovely self. The other thing, I shop at Publix, and I see people standing at St. Mary's at the bus stop in the rain with their groceries. And I called Space Coast Area Transit, and they said that actually that would be something, either having, you know, covered bus stop areas or else having the bus go to the public shopping center there, Rockledge Square. And they said in the past that it had gone to Rockledge Square, and the owner decided they didn't want it to go to Rockledge Square anymore. And I thought, well, this sounds like something that Rockledge could handle, you know, to work with these people so that it could actually go there and allow people, you know, or handicapped or whatever, to be able to pick up their groceries and not get wet. You know, either thing is bad. I mean, one time I stopped and I gave an umbrella to the people waiting there at St. Mary's. And then we also have the bus stop at the other end of the St. Mary's complex that I think services the hospital, and that one's kind of, you know, you wonder why there's... You know, why they have to stand there. And again, it's Space Coast Area Transit referred to you all, basically. So I'm here to convey that. And I think that's kind of my list for now, so, thank you.
Well, I think I can answer your questions. I'll try to, at least. The bus stops have been an issue there with the Publix market, the shopping center. You're right, that's changed hands a couple of times. And they wanted it moved out of there years ago. So we really didn't have enough right of way, and we had trouble with St. Mary's Church did not want us to put... We had a company that went around to the city and picked spots, and they would provide the covers, okay, for advertising dollars. People would put their advertising on the covers, and they would provide them with no cost to the taxpayers. Well, St. Mary's didn't want them on their property. That was a problem. And there was not enough right of way there for us to actually put one of those covers in the area that we put it in. So that's why you have that bus stop right there. There's really not enough right of way to put one of those covers there. And St. Mary's does not want them on their property.
They don't want the covers on their property?
They don't want the bus stops or the covers on their property.
Oh, I see.
And so that's been a problem right there. And same thing when you get on over to the hospital. You know, it's where people want those at. A lot of people don't want them in front of their properties or in front of their houses, the bus stops. So that's why they're where they're at, there on Seminole Drive.
Yeah. So you guys have been... Have you tried recently to work with Rockledge Square, the new owners?
I don't think we have recently, no.
Yeah, because that would solve two problems.
Yeah. I don't know if it's the same owner or if it's been a new owner since then, since we did move it. I'm not sure. I mean, our city manager wasn't here when all this transpired.
Right, they've changed.
And that's just what I remember, what happened over in that area. As far as the dock, there's nothing on the plan right now to do anything with the dock. We had a lot of issues with that dock, with the city council. We've never have addressed it at this time. And I don't know in the near future how soon it will be addressed.
There was... And that brought to mind the other... And I've asked several people here... And again, it apparently doesn't really have anybody that wants to claim it. But I volunteer at the Georgia Phillips Reading Room, and, you know, the old police station. And there's no sidewalk between, I think it's Malibu Restaurant, I think, on the corner, and US-1. So you see people, you know, they might be in the street walking there because the grass, I guess they feel, is too uneven. And that is, you know, a pretty significant safety hazard, especially, you know, like, I have a hard time... I almost tripped walking in, you know, so...
I thought we put sidewalks on both sides of Barton when we did it. We don't have enough right of way there, Ken?
It's the police station, it's...
That's because of the railroad.
Yeah, but there's...
The nearest light across the street is all the way back at Burrell, isn't it?
It's quite a ways back. And frankly, people, because there's that turning lane coming south on US-1, people are coming in, you know, at the yield, and they're, you know, they're going a pretty good clip typically. So it's... And you would have to cross the, you know, all lanes twice if you're going to do that. If you were, you know, on the south side of Barton Boulevard, then you'd have to cross to the north and then, you know, walk up the block and then cross to the... Across all those lanes to the south, which to me, strikes me as being, you know, very incapacitating for someone with limited mobility.
Yeah. I understand that, too, and I don't know if that's something that we can address when FEC comes through with the new railroad track with Brightline. It might be an idea at that time to address it, to put a crossing for pedestrians on both sides of Barton Boulevard.
And so the issue is the grade?
Well, I don't know if it's the grade. I think it's the expense of the railroad crossing.
But, I mean, well, I'm very naive about these sort of things, but there's a particular requirement to get across the railroad track?
Well, you have to have a pedestrian crossing arm.
Oh, I see.
And that's another expense, and those things, and the city has to pay for those.
Is there one on the other side? Is there one on the north side? I wasn't even aware of it. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we pay... The taxpayers pay for that. FEC doesn't pay none of that.
Quite frankly, I never see pedestrians on the north side. I think they just, you know, figure a different way.
I see pedestrians there a lot, myself.
Do you?
Crossing, definitely.
But I just, you know, I just see people walking in the street, and I don't know where they go after they walk in the street.
Probably something we can address when Brightline comes through with the... There's gonna be double tracks there someday in the future.
Yeah.
And probably in the near future, a couple of years.
Okay, well, if it could, you know, just getting the sidewalk in front of, you know, the former police station.
Right, right.
And so people didn't feel like they had to walk in the street to get level footing.
We could possibly take the sidewalk and turn it into the police department.
We could certainly look at it.
Not the police department, turn it into the Georgia Phillips Reading Library.
Right, yeah.
We'll have the city manager look at that.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I appreciate your consideration on those matters. And if some really persuasive person could get in touch with Rockledge Square, maybe, you know, two things could be accomplished there.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Lisa? Pat, did you have a card? Come on.
I do.
If there's anybody else in the audience that wants to speak to the city council about anything to do with the City of Rockledge, this is your time to come forward. Go ahead, Pat.
Pat O'Neill, 1232 Primrose Place, Rockledge. I don't know if I've ever spoken from the podium over here. Reference to your bus stop, my scout troop tried to do a bus stop at St. Mary's, and we were denied. The one we put in at Levitt Park and Fisk Boulevard was the original project to go to St. Mary's.
Yep.
On the other hand, Father King is no longer at St. Mary's, so approaching them again, you might get a different result. I don't know.
Yeah, I think he was against it, but it went all the way to Orlando, and they said they didn't want the liability on their property.
So... But anyhow, we did try to put one there.
Remember that.
And we did put a bus stop in, but it wasn't there. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the city. One, for recognizing the scouts. Dr. Fettro and I talked Napoleon used to give a little piece of cloth to his soldiers, recognizing their ferociousness in battle, their demeanor, whatever they did that was good, just a little piece of cloth, a small ribbon. And that does so much, especially to a younger person, that they got recognized for doing something good. And I'm tickled to death to be here. I want to thank Dr. Fettro. I want to thank Alex wherever, way in the back. That's our conduit to Eagle Scout projects. And we have done... I keep... I'm sitting back there thinking, I forgot about the bus stop. I forgot about the memorial wall at Larry Schultz Park. That's been done twice. My scout troop did it the first time. Larry Schultz's grandson refurbished it. So that was a double project. We're all over the city. You just don't know where it came from, and it came from scouting. So anyhow, I wanted to thank the city staff. I've probably been a pain in the rear on some of the projects. I know I've been a pain in the rear on some of the projects, but it's been all for a good cause.
Yes.
And just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Pat, for what you do. We appreciate it. Anybody else want to come for the city council? Talk about anything in the City of Rockledge. Okay, we're gonna move on, then. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items. One, I would first ask if you would help me congratulate Alex Bernard. I have added some areas of oversight under her purview and given her more responsibility in the fact that she now supervises building and permitting. So she took that on willingly and just continues to perform well. So congratulations and thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
Next item is, I'd like to gauge council's level of interest, so bear with me for just a moment, in something. There... The city's vision for east of US-1 has been to get residents and businesses on city sewer. I.e., the first project that the city undertook was the Breeze Swept project. As you all know, we're just finishing that up. In fact, it is finished. So there were 139 homes in that community that are now on sewer. And as part of that project, infrastructure was put in place just beside, almost slightly behind Kelsey's, but in the road. So there's a manhole there and everything so that those businesses in that respective area could also connect to sewer. And so I... This is something that is very important to the city. We have the sewer plant. It has ample capacity. Infrastructure's already in place. So I was wondering, as if I approach businesses and we try to incentivize, if you will, businesses to get on city sewer, might the council allow for the city to perhaps not have them pay impact fees? Because the infrastructure's already in place, so there's no cost to the city. And in fact, for this project particularly, the city got grant funding for a fair amount of that project. The project in total was 3.4 million. The city got $2.2 million in grant funds. So again, it saved the ratepayers that money and has the infrastructure in place. So if businesses then do connect, then the city gets paid in perpetuity through the sewer fees. So again, this is kind of the first project. I'll say phase one where the residents, phase two perhaps the businesses. The city is already looking at project number two. If you go south to Park Avenue, there are some homes there. Likewise, there are some businesses that line US-1 there. So if the city council might allow, assuming we get grant funds for part to all of that project, I wonder, might the city council allow us to try and incentivize businesses to join city sewer, assuming there are no costs to the city and that that infrastructure could be paid for in advance? So I'll stop there, Mayor. I was just wondering if council might entertain that thought.
Well, I think that was our intent from day one. The reason we put that manhole there was to try to pick up that commercial. And I think our intent, now that we know what the... What the state is thinking and the DEP and the St. John's is thinking, they're willing to throw money at us to continue to expand the sewer line and pick up these houses and these businesses at very little cost of ours. And like you said, we've got this money coming in every month now for eternity. And they're always gonna pay, so I think we have the sewer plant there. And by the way, folks, our sewer plant will be paid off this year. 30 years, the longest $30 million bond, the longest the city ever had, and the most money the city ever borrowed will be paid off this September?
September of this year, yes, Mayor.
September of this year. And our sewer plant is... We expanded it 30 years ago, and it still has capacity, has a lot of capacity. So these guys that were sitting up here 30 years ago, one of them's sitting down here still, made the right decision. And, I mean, we're reaping the benefits of it today, let's put it that way. And we have plenty of capacity, and as long as we can put people on it and they can pay us a monthly fee for it, I mean, it's great for the taxpayers of Rockledge. That's my opinion.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't our preliminary test results on the reductions in the water from the Breeze Swept that we just completed, aren't those better than anticipated?
Deputy Mayor, they are outstanding. I will never forget seeing the color-coded chart of the septic tanks in that community. So like the nitrogen, phosphorus, ammonium, those types of elements, if you will, were color-coded, and they were... Red was the worst. And you literally could see red for where every septic tank was located so that those elements were going into the ground and subsequently to the Indian River Lagoon. And ammonium was blue, I think it was, a dark blue, and that was all over the chart as well. And so the city has... We have some test sites there that will be monitored. I think it's two, maybe three years out, to make sure that the results are, as you say, Deputy Mayor. So so far, preliminary first couple of tests show that it has virtually eliminated those elements going into the river, ammonium or anything. So it is absolutely doing what the city thought it would and improving the quality of life in Indian River Lagoon and in the ground and everything. So it's been wonderful.
I love it when a plan comes together and something actually produces the kind of results that we were looking for when we took it on because this was kind of a first-of-its-kind project in the state, I think.
We were, we were.
It is, and actually, Rockledge has really been kind of the pillar, if you will, of those projects and one of the first to be funded by Indian River Lagoon. The half-cent sales tax committee, we got $880,000. There was a short video made about the project. In fact, Alex was one of the people featured in it. But the entire project is being watched throughout the state, literally, and the results that it will bring. So Rockledge has really led the way.
We always are. We're the leaders, and all the other cities follow. We've done it many times. Remember the Little House Ordinance? The marijuana dispensaries? We were the leaders. Now the rest of them are falling in place. The fertilizer ordinance, remember that? We were the first ones in the county.
Okay.
Past fertilizer ordinance. Passed fertilizer ordinance. Okay, so anybody else have any questions or remarks and we're consensus here, I assume?
I'd been approached by someone in that area who was asking about hookup, so, over the last year, so.
So our consensus in this area is for our city manager to move forward and try to expand this thing as much as she can?
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Do you want a motion on that? Or Joe, do we need a motion for that, or?
Just giving direction to the city manager to pursue grants, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, and to move forward with the expansion of our sewer lines in that area.
I would say that it is probably policy, but the council shouldn't make a motion.
And to allow the impact fees to not be paid by businesses? Okay.
Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the city manager's recommendation to potentially expand the hookups to the sewer treatment plant via grants as well as looking at the potential to waive the impact fees to the commercial buildings and future residentials as well.
Okay. We have a motion? We have a second? Did we have a second?
Yeah.
We had a second. Any other discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing?
Sure.
All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
One last item, Mayor, just to let the council know that I'll be out of the office tomorrow and Friday. And Mr. Matthew Trine will be the acting city manager during my absence. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All of you call him three or four times a day.
He'll have to wear two ties.
All right, let's move forward. City Attorney Litigation Report. Who's going to give me a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to be in receipt of the City Attorney Litigation Report dated February 1st, 2018.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say a nay. Mr. City Attorney.
The only change in the massive number of litigation we have ongoing, actually, there's only two that really involve us, is the forfeiture case. The judge ordered us to mediation, which they always do with the forfeiture of our, in the $77,600 case. I've sent correspondence to the attorney representing the claimant. They've come back and said, whoever you want to pick, send it to us and we'll make a decision. So I've given them two mediators in the county and that's where we're at. So we may be in mediation with it. The judge gave us a drop-dead date of April 5th, so we're going to have to get it done by April and.
So if you don't agree on mediation, then it goes back to trial?
Well, it's not that. If we don't agree to mediation, I've got to do a scheduling conference with the judge, go in and say why we couldn't do it. And he would say, okay, I'm going to drop it off my trial docket, probably. That's, but I think we'll come to some sort of agreement on a mediator one way or the other.
Okay.
I didn't give him anybody who was a close personal friend, so. Other than that, no changes. And unless you have some questions, I've got nothing else.
Anybody have any questions of the City Attorney? Let's move on. Report from Dais, City Clerk. City Attorney, you're good, right? Councilman?
March 3rd, Little League Opening Day.
Yes, it is.
Nine o'clock.
Councilwoman Martin?
Just a few things I wanted to mention. First of all, I was a little passionate about Verda Chief Man. Actually, when their building was erected, I had 18, I think they're at 1845. I had lived at 1716 Cotswold Street for seven years. So very memorable for me, having them in our neighborhood. I also wanted to reflect on the Legal Cities meeting, our recent meeting, Stella event. And very informative, I took away from there from the EDC and the St. John's River Management. And I also wanted to just personally thank the city manager for just always being available. I'm all of a sudden getting, not all of a sudden, because it's part of being a public servant, I'm getting phone calls and emails. And she's always accessible and I certainly appreciate that and just your support and expeditiously responding to citizen concerns. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir. This is a friendly request with absolutely no discussion tonight. No discussion about what we're about to request. Over the years, the entrance to Levitt Park and Fisk, always been a problem with the buses coming in and traffic. And you should see it in the morning with Anderson and Kennedy and all the schools. Dr. Fettro, perhaps at the next meeting or one thereafter, if we could just get a status report or an update as to where that might be. I know DOT is involved, the county, all of that. And then, and it's entrance and exit out of there in the morning and in the afternoon. It's just accidents have been happening and, you know, we do the best we can, but I think it's something we need to take a look at. Because 95 is booming now and that's an entrance in, you know, the south side of, the north side, rather, of Rockledge coming off there. So let's take a look at that.
Great.
But no discussion on it tonight, please.
Okay. Dr. Ferguson?
Good evening. Without any question, I want to again thank and appreciate our city employees, along with Dr. Fettro for your hard work and going well and beyond every week to accomplish the assignments that you have. And I want to say a special congratulations again to Alex. Congratulations. And I know you'll do a tremendous job. Not to end this meeting on a down note, but I don't think we should allow ourselves to become numb to the things that we see, the shootings that we're all seeing. And I don't think there's any way that we should forget about those seventeen young people, as well as teachers, that lost their life in Parkland, Florida. No matter the stance we all have or you may take, to see those young people rally together like they are in Tallahassee this week. And that's amazing. That's amazing to see how young people are really taking initiative and saying enough is enough. And so I applaud those young people, but let's not forget the lives that were lost in Parkland last week. I yield.
Mr. Dasky?
Congratulations, Alex. Job I'm sure you'll do very well with. Thank you again to the Boy Scouts and the leaders that came out tonight. I know you're always out helping us and nice to see you all be recognized tonight. And it's kind of nice to look out there and thank you to the other people that have shown up tonight. We don't always have people here during our meetings, so it's kind of a nice feeling to see that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, the, Councilman Ferguson brought up a good point in that I think in the situation in South Florida at Douglas High School, I will tell you that I was encouraged and I think that the students there did the best thing for their own healing and that is by saying, I'm angry and I'm going to do something about it. Which I think is better for their healing process than to go, oh, woe is me, my friend was killed. And I know that sounds terrible to say it that way, but I think the fact that they're fighting back against it is good for their mental health and for the country. On a totally different note, I just want to mention something. And I'll take responsibility. I dropped the ball for this several months ago and didn't bring it up like I had told someone that I would. But a couple of years ago, when we named Lake Betsy and the Don Griffin Trail and Dr. Jolie Smith Boulevard or Avenue or Drive over there, we also named another street after our former finance director and assistant city manager, Dave Henderson. And it finally got through my thick head one day that we have not had a ceremony to dedicate that street yet. And I think we need to make an arrangement and do that as soon as possible. You know, it would be a, it would not be a good thing to have it go unrecognized. I mean, it was important enough for us to name a street after him and I think it's important enough for us to have a ceremony and recognize it and, you know, officially kind of cut the ribbon on it. So, wanted to bring that up.
And we will discuss that more with the city manager and get back on that as well. Okay, I want to remind the city council of the city manager evaluations. I still have two that are outstanding out here that I need to get from two of the council people. They're supposed to be due today. So if you could please put them in my box here at City Hall, I'd appreciate it. So I can report back to you all at the next council meeting, which is March
March 21st.
21st, which is one month from today. We will not have a city council meeting the first Wednesday of the month, being that that is our yearly sponsorship of the Wednesday Friends Day for the Chamber of Commerce. And the entire council will be expected to be at the Wednesday Friends Day. And there's a lot of food there, so. And there's plenty to drink and there's a lot of people there. So if you can show up, we really would appreciate it. Show our support for the Chamber of Commerce and all of our business people that are there supporting our event. And again, I always, I always look forward to our, count our Boy Scouts that are here, the 3-2-1. And I think there might be even more than the 3-2-1 out here. But I always look forward to you guys being here and you're welcome back anytime to come to the council meeting and bring projects to us. We're always looking for projects for you guys to do. So feel free to think about something, that's something different and bring it with us and we'll consider it and we'll get on your side and we'll get this thing done. I know you've done very well in the past with it and a lot of, there's a lot of your projects in the city that, that people use every day. And they're great, so come back, come back and see us, okay? And if there's nothing else before this council, I will adjourn at 7:04 PM.